Oh, it should work. Just connect from this. No no, it's working probably. Well I see about working on getting the pull bar on niche tracks so they have the pull bar like the top bit, 'cause we don't have the top bit at the moment. My whole tits up um another time. Alright, game, let's try two on one. That's requested. Uh let me get this one. Alright, I'm gonna get going. We'll do something. Since I am two on one Ralph.
I want to um
But I'm not fully like the Uniroad is not fully made yet. Still gonna make it, but I'm gonna go to Uniroad and do that. Like there's still a lot I have to add. But this is all free, so I should try to
Work on the game
On my own without um the main person.
I would since I'm wanna do a different bin um ones tech read, it's a different area. Yeah.
Let me see if I can get the orbit title make sure you built. I have like many ideas. It works out. Now I can get this here more realistic. It is it's right there's like a unit here, so I should place a unit. And then figure out how much um bins they use to take out there. Fix maybe fix like that, but it's still Now I can click it. I tried to get that one up. So I'm gonna fully finish um try to see if I can fully on full on finish creating Uniroad. Make it as realist realistic as possible. Yeah, this is like something I'm gonna work on. Get houses on this side. Alright, we gotta like to high up more of Uniroad done. Doesn't he um Ralph just go all the way up here and just do a U-turn? We're gonna book a U-turn since he usually does that before his run. Let me see if I can sneak rebuild um someone area. So it can be more realistic. I think if he does a left turn, like I don't know how much he does he go down for a turn, I think it's the second turn after this one. Have no clue what his run is over here. Two one one. requested by a viewer for me to use this truck. I didn't finish these trends. Well. I'm picking up an idea. Ah do you have any idea? Oh that'd be fun. So my plan is to like constantly like go around. I think I have a run that could work, 'cause I don't know what Ralph main run is and um for life. I can know him on Uniroad a bit. But beside that um I don't know his main run. On red bin week, I'm gonna try to keep going out to loan it more. Get rid of his run. So when I play it next, I can profession its run in these games. This Friday I wanna be down um during Friday fella. I have some things I would like to do. I will put my try to see if I can get the pull bar onto this. Put it yeah. Okay then. I had to click. That's not heaven. I have the viewer that wanted me to use two on one and happy with this trip. Get the pull bar, get um two on one here, make it as realistic as possible. I'm not the green everywhere, but since I want some green uh the war banner. Right. Alright, so I'll do this. What time? I'm gonna go all the way down on the left and then go straight. Alright, we're already done this bit. Let me fix that bin. Mm-hmm. I'm gonna still try to act like well. It's like what I'm trying to do. Remember this is two on one in the game. I wanna make it look like two on one. I have no clue what his route would be if it was realised. I'm just like making up one. ... Sometime I've I've had one trying to force them. Nine more minutes. Do a quick stream today. Not gonna stream every day, but I'm gonna stream a lot more often. Make it turned up to three three streams a day and then Jared gaming my um channel I play Victoria, Fastenphobia, Minecraft. That will be daily. Very early in the morning, so if you have school. You will have to watch your stream after school. 'Cause it's gonna be eleven thirty. Every day on Jared gaming and this one is like every three streams a week. Wed Wednesday, Thursday and Saturday. But that's my plan. Alright. Do a couple more minutes and then call it. Hello Logan. I wanna work on this game, more of this game. Gonna try to add a um front bar to it. I need to figure out how though. The top bit and then make it more like look make it look more like two on one. 'Cause one of some one of the viewers absolutely love two on one. So I want do him an honor by by finishing off his truck with the look. Zero seven free. I would add zero seven f free in this game, but I don't have the model for it. Just use Star made this game and then yeah. But if I can get my hands on old I VAC model. Then I can get um both of those to zero seven three and five three eight in the game. Then next stream if you wish, you can request that truck I use in Aubrey. And I use it. Dammit. That's funny. Doesn't it zero seven free is also spare as well. Is only like use when like I send a truck is off service or someone. There's a flying glitch glitch. This glitches everywhere isn't it? Try to learn as much as I can with these um studio stuff. Then maybe I can help more people with their games. So Logan if you're wondering, I'm trying to I'm gonna increase this channel streams to three of them. Okay um three of them a day. And Jared gaming I'm on. I'm gonna go and do a Jared gaming my second channel or my main channel will be daily. This one will be for every third day. Wait not third day. Will be on Wednesday, Thursday and Saturday. Stream on Jared Garbo and then Jared gaming will be daily. So. Yeah. Whenever you decide to build any of that we f no. Can you co you said you wanting to build like the whole map of Aubrey and Redonka. Can your computer even handle that? Like eventually the computer is gonna like fry or something. No ways I'm Aiden. I wanted fully um get this all done by getting the front bar on it and get the um pull bar and then work on it. Get this fully um decked out. Might end up building small parts of it. Okay. I I didn't film Ralph today, but uh I did talk to him on his break. He has that that one gas station nearby me. But um next recycling week I'll be down there um um on Thursday down in Figueroa Street getting him him and Jeff. And then this Friday I'm not gonna go out, but next Friday I put I might go out. Just to get learn the runoff Ralph doing this main mostly this. 'Cause I have no clue what his main run is. 'Cause this is like um this area is vated on Yuna Road and like the high up like his main area. But I have no clue what his main run is. I I follow him for like a bit and until like Tim arrives or something. That's what mostly I do. Don't want to learn which direction he goes here. But on if uh if I go out on Friday, my main goal will be probably get um a good amount of footage of three eight seven. I know what he does. Which is good. So next wrapping week Friday I'll be out. For this Friday tomorrow I won't 'cause I have some things I have to do on Friday. And it's Friday. Uh still don't know how I. Listen. I think you just love hopping bins, am I wrong? You like eating bins. Uh let me get this bin out. Or maybe I like the. Yeah. Yeah, you got prison time for hopping them bin. That's. It's like a joke. But. Yeah. So this um I'm doing in two on one is based on um the real life area. Not like the full bit, it's just like as much. With stock and actually handle because like any like turn streets he doesn't really like as much. But especially I'm gonna try to get at least more views this area done. Does Ralph skip um double service bins or does he just le um just empty it? Right. I'm gonna go right. I'm gonna do this bin and then move it back into the right. Five more minutes and then five more minutes and I'm gonna wrap up stream. I hope this is um entertaining to see me to beat Ralph try to operate as Ralph in a Redbox game. Zero zero eight one signage. Zero eight one um signage is okay, it's not like the best, but it's okay. By the way, after this stream I'll be in general if you want chat or something. Like zero eight one himself, he doesn't really like the le um the um signage himself. The clean away just put it on there. I don't know if every truck is getting it or not, but that's fine. So. What I know now is so like Logan so you're aware. Um Cleanaway is gonna get m m like s seven more Volvos. It's gonna turn into nothing but a Volvo c um council. Literally. They're getting s like a lot of Volvos and it's eventually just gonna be nothing but Volvos. Okay, so he always um just do them even if the bin didn't stop paid for. 'Cause you wanna hear something funny Aiden? Yep. Um um. Tim skipped a green bin because it was it there was two green bins and he picked up one, but the other bin was not paid for, so he Tim two one two skipped it. And then Ralph goes ahead and picks up that green bit that Tim just skipped for not being paid for for double service. It's funny. It's in one of my videos, I got it in video. If you wish for me to turn it into a sh um short, then I could. It's just fine. So Logan, do you like Dennis Ivaks or um Volvos, which one are like is your most preferred? Whiteback is the old Ivaks. I'm gonna do these I'll do these just until that turn point. Ivak. Ivaka. Okay. Okay. The old Ivax have fun. But do these two and then we um wrap up stream. So Thursday, Wednesday and Saturday are gonna be my stream, I need to pick up one more bin cause I knocked that one over. Uh is it gonna follow me, cause when you click the bin and you forget to unclick the bin the bins start to follow. And we do this bin and I'm gonna wrap out, since I knocked one over. Alright. Alright, so I'm gonna end stream here, I'm gonna be in the general PC on Discord, but I hope you guys have enjoyed, if you have, make sure you leave a like. And if you're new around here, make sure you leave a subscribe so I can get to five hundred subscribers for the end of the year, that would be absolutely amazing. Anyways, I hope you guys have a wonderful day and I'll catch you in the next one, bye.